I'd like to call this meeting to order. Do I have a motion to convene into executive session?
It's moved.
No, you have to read it.
Oh, you want me to read? Alright, then I'll do that first. Okay. Uh, approval of execs- executive-
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to convene to executive session. Approval of executive session minutes for August thirteenth, twenty twenty five and September ninth, twenty twenty five. Review and or remove matters which relate to the privacy of students and their records pursuant to Rhode Island general laws forty-two, forty-six, five, A, eight. Home school requ- request. Grant of temporary easement to Rhode Island DOT at Hope Elementary School pursuant to Rhode Island general laws forty-two, forty-six, five, A, five. Disposition of re- of real property. Superintendent's contract extension pursuant to Rhode Island general laws forty-two, forty-six, five, A, one. Job performance of an individual. Update on STA negotiations pursuant to Rhode Island general laws forty-two, forty-six, five, A, one. Collective bargaining. Annual school safety plans pursuant to Rhode Island general laws forty-two, forty-six, five, A, three. Deployment of s- security personnel or devices and Rhode Island general laws sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-five. Annual review of school safety plans.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
...
Okay.
Right, so I have a motion to accept the consent agenda. I need someone to read it.
I move to accept that consent agenda. One, the minutes, regular session minutes of September ninth and the bills general fund. Nine, one through nine thirty in the amount of nine hundred and seventy five thousand, oh, nine hundred and seventy five, six hundred and five. And eighty one cents, something down there. And B grant, grant fund bills from nine, one to nine thirty, twenty twenty five, sixty two thousand, four hundred and forty three dollars and sixty six cents. And nutrition fund balance nine, one through nine thirty, twenty twenty five, twelve thousand, eight hundred and fifty four dollars and forty two cents.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Cause I didn't hear anybody, everybody answered.
Uh, yeah, nope, nope.
Okay. Uh, next is public comment. Um, before we go into public comment, I would like to. Read my public comment statement. A meeting of the public is a gathering where anyone can attend to discuss and provide input on a particular issue. While a school committee meeting is held in public, is a meeting where the school committee conducts business, which is open to the public to observe, but. Where the primary focus is on the committee's decision making. With the designated time for public comment, essentially the public is present. To listen and provide feedback rather than actively participate in the committee's deliberations. The public comment period is not a time for dialogue. A meeting of the public school committee is not a meeting of the public, it is a meeting of the school committee that is held in public. The purpose of the public comment period is for the committee to receive input from the community. Public comment is an important function and is critical for us to listen to the community and to consider what we hear when making our decisions in general. It is not a time to receive direct responses from the school committee, however, we may provide brief factual clarification if necessary. Otherwise, public comment section is for you to voice concerns without engaging in a debate with the school committee members. It's important for you to know that we may not be getting, you may not be getting your answers to your questions or concerns during public comment period. But that does not mean you will not be given answers. There are other opportunities for you to get your answers, for example, you can email or call any school committee member. And our contact information is on the school website. This process is designed to allow consistency and fairness and to allow members of the community to. To a chance to be heard without unduly disrupting a meeting flow. And allow school committee members to complete its business in a timely fashion. As a result, in order to allow everyone the opportunity to speak and an opportunity for us to hear your comments. Allow each person to come to the mic once during public comment. If you find that you have additional comments after your turn is over, then please address them at a later time by reaching out to a school community member. Or the superintendent. Having said that, we appreciate you coming to this meeting and we thank you in advance. For expressing your thoughts with us. So I would like to take um, public comment from the people here first before we go to the people on Zoom, so when you come up, please say your name and address. Seeing nobody here, I'll go to Zoom. Hi Jenna Rutherford, I, I see you're up, just state your address, please.
Jenna Rutherford, three, three, four, Bungie Road. Um, I would like to know who, um, can you hear me?
We're good. Can you hear me Jenna?
I can. Can you hear me? Hello?
Anderson, oh, we got you now, sorry about that.
Oh, okay, um, Jenna Rutherford, three, three, four, Bungie Road. Um, I was wondering who is running the district right now?
Right now, we have um, our high school principal who has a certificate in um, the superintendent and uh, certificate and we have. Dana Morell, who's the middle school principal, also has a certificate um, for um, superintendent and those two are. Tag teaming and in charge of any type of emergencies at this point.
When were the parents going to be alerted that there is uh, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent are not? Um, they're currently on leave of absence. Hello?
Yep.
Yes, good eve, good evening, uh, this is Johnny Anderson, the school department's attorney. Um, when employees of the school department take a leave of absence, that is a personnel matter and it is personal to those people. I can say, however, that the assistant superintendent has given her um, notice that she will be returning next week.
I think, I, I think with, can you? Okay, so to, to expand upon that, John, I, I was um. I think there does, I, I, and you're the, you're the attorney here, but if our superintendent is going to be out for a period of time. I think there should be notification of the, of the, to the community. Um, and I think that the committee, I was very surprised to see that it wasn't on tonight's agenda. Um, I know the agenda was posted, uh, you know, on Friday, but there are emergent situations that um, if. Any essential, if any superintendent is going to be out, um, they're the CEO of this district. So I think the school committee should be discussing what the move forward plan will be in the absence, I, I do know that um. Erica just stated, and I do know that two of our very um. Capable uh, building principals are superintendent certified, but they, you know, collectively have, you know. A bunch of kids to take care of during the day, middle school and high school, right, so um, while that's, you know, a short term fix, if somebody there, we're covered. What are we going to be doing moving forward and there should be some form of communication out to parents, I, I agree with you Jenna.
Uh, I, I, first of all, let me clarify, the only reason I made a reference to the assistant superintendent was to. Clarify the information that was said on, from the community.
Okay.
That that situation was coming to an end, uh, as of, well, Monday's the holiday, so Tu, so Tuesday, so I wanted to clarify that. Um, if the school committee wishes to have a meeting to discuss um. Who's running the school district, uh, I will go straight to the point. Um, that's up to the school committee, if the school committee wants to hold a meeting. Um, it was, I will respectfully say that it was not added as an emergency agenda, agenda item. Because I take, uh, that I give advice on emergencies that it's, I've, once in. Twenty five, thirty years have I said, seen an, seen an emergency, um, that I truly believe. Falls in the category of an emergency, an emergency might be, there's been a hurricane and the roof has been ripped off. And we don't have time to go to bidding because we need tarpaulins put on the roof. Get the tarpaulins up on the roof.
Okay.
I think that if the school committee wishes to have a deliberative process, um, with regard to that. That's a decision for the school committee, it is not a violation of the um, open meetings act for the school committee to discuss. Having a meeting, it's a violation to discuss.
What?
What you would, the substance of what you would discuss in a meeting.
So, and I don't know if that, that this is the time to say it, or I know we're in public comments, so I don't want it to, to steal the space, but I think that. Um, as a member of the school committee, I think we, we need a move forward plan, so I think we do need to set something. John, I get it's not the roof calling off, but it is something that needs to be, and I, I respect that, it's, you know, I know what the exceptions are, but this was a circumstance that came to play. Following the, you know, the normal timeframes of setting an agenda, so I'm, and I'm not arguing that point.
And I respect the fact that you and I have disagreed.
Yeah.
On, on different occasions and we, we smile afterwards.
No, and, but I would like to, I think as a committee, uh, that we do need to meet and up, it would be, and we have to post a meeting, um, sooner rather than later. To discuss what, and again, this is no reflection on um. Our, our building principles that are standing in, it is greatly appreciated, we're blessed to have um. Two principals that are superintendent certified, but as I stated, they also have um. A lot of other responsibilities as well, so we need a plan and I would like this, uh, it's my recommendation that. We schedule a meeting for as soon as possible to discuss what that move forward plan is going to be.
So, and I want to clarify, there was no plans on telling the parents at all that we, that there was no one steering the ship.
Again, the statement that no one is steering the ship is not correct. There are two administrators, which for a district this size is pretty impressive. Um, you know, I know another district that has almost ten thousand students, they only have five people who have superintendent certificates. There are two people who have superintendent certificates. It's now Tuesday, my understanding is that Friday is a holiday, so we are talking about the next two school days. If the school committee wishes to have.
No, no, I, that, that's, that's.
No, I'm only talking about the shortest of, the shortest of terms in that. The school, what I'm about, what I'm saying is if the school committee would like to have a meeting, the school committee can. Need two business days, no, two business days notice to do. That's all, that's all I'm saying, I just want to correct the statement that quote, no one is steering the ship.
But you do realize that teachers didn't even know who was in charge, not just parents.
And again, when employees take leaves of, leaves of absence, we don't announce the teacher, that teachers. Or any of our employees take a leave of absence, because the next question that will come, once the answer to that is. Will tell us what the reasons are for the leave of absence. And again, it's a.
I have not asked why they're on the leave of absence, not once.
No, you haven't, but the next person who asks the question will.
I just wish there was more transparency across the board and I feel like. This is a constant theme of not being transparent. I shouldn't have to do these things through the rumor mill.
Um, I would like to um, hear from the other committee members as to what they feel as though we need to do for a move forward plan. Um, in light of, you know, our superintendent being out at this time.
I mean, between, so we have um, Wednesday and Thursday. Friday is PD day, Monday's a holiday. And Tuesday, the assistant superintendent's coming back, so.
I don't, I don't understand the relevance of the assistant superintendent coming back on.
So you want to have a discussion, um.
So the, so the assistant super.
So you want to have a meeting to discuss what's happening between now and when the superintendent comes back?
Yeah.
Um, like put out a schedule tomorrow to see who's free.
And Jen, I'm not, I'm not um, incorrect in stating that we can, we can, it's not a violation to discuss open dates right now to set, it, it, we'd need to give. No, so there's, there's five of us right here right now, so when can we meet? And I, I'm very cognizant of it being a holiday and, but this is, this is important, this is.
Yep, the earliest would be Friday. Unfortunately, it's art festival. When are you free, Colleen Penegast?
I will make myself free. So we're looking at if it was posted, forty eight hours notice, if it was posted, um. Tomorrow morning, the earliest that we could meet would be Friday morning, again cognizant that the, there are no students in district on. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Um, we could meet on Tuesday, I, I don't know, I'm just saying that, I'm just putting that out there, I don't know what everyone's.
I can't meet on Tuesday, cause I have a three to seven o'clock meeting with negotiations.
Um. Can we do Friday? Yeah, we can do Friday morning.
I can't do Friday morning, I have an obligation.
Okay, can you do Friday afternoon then?
After five o'clock?
I can, I'll make myself available, this, I mean, obviously, this needs to. I can, I'll make myself available. This, I mean, obviously this needs to.
So after seven o'clock?
I, I, I just want to remind people that we have to get 48, you know, two, two business days notice. If you're talking about seven o'clock on Friday, that means it needs to be posted by 7:00 AM tomorrow. I'm going.
No, we're saying 7:00 PM, right?
Seven.
Yeah, that's where we're, yeah, thank you. So the meeting, we're stating that it would be Friday.
I've got time on the 15th. I do have a meeting on the 15th that starts at, at seven at night.
We're talking about the, this Friday.
After eight o'clock.
After.
So here, here's the reality, our, our district is without a superintendent right now, and we need to come up with a come forward plan. I get everyone's busy. Maybe we can see if the vast majority can meet. I don't know if we're going to be able to, I will make myself available for whatever, whatever everyone else can do. And if it's eight o'clock on a Friday night, I'll do eight o'clock on a Friday night. So that would be the.
So can everyone be here eight o'clock on a Friday night, on this coming Friday?
We'll have someone open the bell.
You just said you. I thought you said you worked. Oh, I thought you said you were available at seven. Sadty's the art festival and I'm sure there's people. There's many people who are in different clubs that are volunteering, Lions, Rotary, yeah.
No, I think we need to set it. I mean, this isn't.
That if you're going to discuss in any way, shape or form, the job performance of any individuals, that would be an executive session discussion and the person has to be given notice. If you're discussing with concepts at large, I guess is the best way to put it. I'm being a little bit ambiguous there. That's a public discussion. So I'm happy to, Ms. Carnavale has bent over backwards to be helpful the last few days.
Yes.
But, and I will work with her if you decide to have a meeting. But I need to know what is on the agenda.
How about Colleen Kuhn, I'd like to propose that we, since it's not happening quickly, can we all stay after the meeting and us decide on when we can meet so that we can move on with business? So parents here can get home to their kids.
Yeah, but I, we should still be, let's, let's continue this. We'll remain an open session when this is here. So everyone can hear that us, when we'll be planning for this meeting.
That's fine. Just remind me in case I forget when we get to the end of the agenda. Yeah, thank you, Jenna. Who's, who's next? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes.
Alicia Matthews, Tonk Hill Road. Just a question. So there's the withdrawal from Northwest Special Education on the discussion. I wasn't, I don't know if you guys already talked about it or not.
It's going to be tabled.
It's going to be tabled. Okay, um, which is fine. Are you able to provide any more information to us as to whether, like what that means?
I, we haven't even been given the presentation, so we are, we have nothing to even, I've got a hundred questions myself, so no, we have nothing to provide.
Table till next month?
Correct.
And then before you vote on it next month, we'll be able to ask questions on what that entails and how it impacts the district?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we don't need to have that vote until December 31st anyway, so.
Perfect. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just as a point of clarification, I don't know if it would be helpful for the audience members, obviously here and at home. Are there any matters that we're planning on tabling for this evening? So that if people are waiting to comment or have questions about that, we could take a motion to table those ahead of time?
Yeah, we can make a motion to pull under new business for discussion action vote withdrawal of Northwest Special Ed. Do I make a motion to pull that out of order and bring it into public comment so we can?
Is, is that the only thing that?
The only other thing I was going to table is the superintendent's report and the director of finance report.
Okay, but nothing in, that we're going to be voting on or taking?
Correct. Correct.
Four.
Correct. Which is the only one that would have a vote as, as attached to it.
So I just, I'd like to make a motion to table, I know we're kind of jumping around, but just for, so everyone knows what we're doing to table the withdrawal from Northwest Special Education until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Any discussion? All in favor? Properly, we should have voted to move it out of order, but I think we're okay. I have.
Is there any more public discussion?
Alex Wilson? Alexis, sorry? Please state your, yes, hello, please state your address.
It's Alexis Wilson, 888 Chopmest Hill Road. Technically two comments, but I'll, since we already discussed the superintendent, I would like to know if there is an update on what the new tuition money for preschool is being utilized for, like what is that being put towards for the preschool?
I will have to get back to you on that because I don't have an answer. But I have made note and I'll have someone get back to you on that. How, how is it best to reach you?
Um, email, phone number is fine. I am usually at Clayville once a week, so.
Can you email me with your email address and then I'll be sure and have it and then I can get someone back to you?
Yeah, of course.
My email's on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Michael Smith, 241 Hope Furnace Road. I was on the call last meeting. I actually called in kind of arguing on why you guys were voting for Lori's contract then. I just have a couple of questions and I need clarity, basically. Was that the official vote to not renew her contract? Like, has that decision been made? Because I feel like I, you guys could still vote on it, but I also feel, again, going back to kind of what Jenna was saying, we don't have a lot of information, the rumor mills go around. We're hearing she was notified last week that she is not going to be employed come February. Well, sorry, instead of telling her in February, come June, she won't be employed. And that's why now all of a sudden she's on a leave again. We don't get to know why she's on leave. I'm not saying that, but basically you guys are probably going to figure this out. If you guys did notify her, she's not coming back. Let's be real. So I'm just trying to figure out, like, did you guys notify her that she's not getting her contract renewed yet? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
We did not.
Okay, did you direct the school department attorney to go see her at our office last week to tell her that you were going to put it on the agenda for this month?
It was not going to go on the agenda this month. It was, what she did, what the vote was last time was to not approve the contract that was attached.
Okay.
Not to not renew her.
So did, I guess, why did we have to do that now? Because like, we have to notify her, oh, sorry, I'm yelling, sorry. We had to notify her in February, I think you guys said, because her contract would automatically renew in February if we don't notify her by February. So I'm confused on why that was on the agenda last week and vote on it.
I can speak to that briefly. So we had a special meeting, it was an executive session, at which time it was determined that the chair of the school committee was actually doing her own investigation into the superintendent that was not voted on by this committee. That was back in August. And during that time, it was discussed that we need to do right by the superintendent of schools. And we had a discussion that the best way to move forward is to extend the superintendent's contract for two more years. So there was a consensus at that meeting that that's what we were going to do. So that's why it was on at that time. However, from when that meeting occurred till our next public meeting, some of the members changed their mind and decided that that wouldn't be a good idea. I think it was actually Dave Medbury, who was very upset that what was happening when we were in the executive session. And then when he was here, and what he's been stating is that the, honestly, the town council doesn't want her around. So that was what precipitated, and we were dumbfounded by that. Actually, the superintendent of schools was humiliated at our last school committee meeting. And I.
Regardless of your feelings on her, I don't think that was right.
Absolutely. But I, I will tell you this. What was put on the agenda was put on after a discussion of the school committee, because we had every intention of extending her contract for two years. And it was only behind the scenes, I don't know if it was a Roman quorum, if it was, that there were sides that changed their mind on that, hence humiliating the superintendent in that. And, Erica, I would like you to ask the question, answer the question. Did you in fact send the school department attorney to, at your request, to meet with the superintendent of schools on Wednesday of last week to state that her contract was not going to be renewed?
I cannot predict how people are going to vote.
No, I asked you, did you ask, I'm, I'm not asking if anybody voted. Did you ask the, the, the school department attorney to go to meet with Lori to inform her that her contract was not going to be renewed? That you wanted that on the agenda for this month? I'm not asking you to predict how anybody votes. Did you ask the, the school department attorney, Johnny Anderson, to go to Lori's office to meet with her, to tell her on October, what, I, I don't, the first maybe? That her contract was not going to be renewed and you wanted it on this agenda that was going to take place on Tuesday, which had to be posted on Friday?
How would I know that her contract was not going to be?
Did you ask John to go to her office?
How did I know that?
I'm asking you, did you, you're not answering my question. Did you ask him to go there? Because he went there stating to, that he went at your request because you did not want her, you wanted the non-renewal on the agenda. Is that accurate?
The non-renew was, the non-renew was going to be on the next agenda.
So you.
Or the renewal was going to be on the next agenda because it was already voted on at the last meeting that her other contract was not approved. So.
No, it was the non-renewal. There was nothing, again, I think as Mr. Smith said, it's February that we would have to give notice. Why would anything be taking place now?
So let's think about this.
I thought it was December and that's where we were trying to put it on the December meeting.
But why, so why?
I don't understand with February, she has to be notified in writing long before February.
No.
December. The, the contract says by, by February, this is normally something that happens in December.
No, he is right. It is.
Right?
No, it's not.
It happens now?
It's, it's, we're, we're starting this, this is October.
Right. It should have happened in December if we were going to have discussions and stuff.
But, but why, why, why did you ask the, the attorney to go to the office to put it on the agenda for this meeting in October for the non-renewal of the contract?
So it seemed to me that after the last vote, things were very much in limbo. Right? So the vote for the majority of the school committee to not approve that contract sent a message. And was it better to have the school department and school committee be in limbo of like, all right, like what, what, where, what the, what's the direction going to be? Where are we going? Or to wait until December, January? There's pros and cons to both of them. And I was playing out what would be best for everybody. Because if this was something that, of the message that had already been sent, as Mike Smith said, would it be more settling and better for the district and everyone around to know what's going to happen as of June 30?
So you thought it'd be better to do something in September or October with a day's notice than to wait until such time that the contract required that to happen?
And it ended up not being on the agenda.
But did you, or did you not direct the attorney to go there and do that? Answer the question, Erica.
I don't like the word direct. It was a conversation, didn't give a directive. It was a conversation of what's better, what's best, what, what is best for everybody around, including the superintendent? And then so we could have a vote, another vote, which I would not know what direction it went in. And let's just see, and, and not have everybody in limbo and everyone wondering, okay, like, it's kind of hard to move forward after the last vote.
So you, you were looking at it so we could have a discussion, so we could then extend the contract? Or you, what was your thought on that?
Wanted to have closure.
Was there closure from the, are we looking for the closure from the meeting that we had when it was determined that you were actually investigating the, the way it was posted as, as a criminal or civil misconduct? Because.
Investigating criminal or civil misconduct?
That's how the agenda item was, was posted on. Do you want to go back to?
There is a, there's a legal reason for that, Jenna. Is, is all of this like, still okay to be? It's, it's okay to talk about all this. I mean, I'm fine to talk about it. I just want to make sure that we're not in violation.
And talk about scheduling a meeting. But this, I'm concerned that the discussion they're having now is what we would talk at, about at that meeting, not at this meeting. Respectively.
Okay, so we'll get back to scheduling a meeting at the end of this. Back to Mike's question, I'm sorry, Mike, yeah.
My question was whether we. Say something else because I am who I am. Look, I get you guys are all, have your own opinions on things, but like, as a perspective from the public, you guys really got to get your, your crap together, like somewhat on the same page. I mean, Erica, it was great that you came to the field. You both did too. Great, thank you. We had a nice talk there. But clearly you're doing things behind everybody else's back too. We're all seeing this now. Like this isn't just Colleen calling you up, but Colleen, you're also just calling her out, no offense. I mean, you guys are just calling each other out.
So the reality is, as a politician, the only way to have discussions is in an open session. There's nothing.
It just seems like, I mean, gosh, we don't get anywhere. All we do is fight on this and like, we're getting nowhere and we're sitting here as parents wondering what's happening with our schools. And you're even sitting here defending the fact that we weren't notified by our superintendent. That is crazy talk. That is insane that we are sitting here not notified. This didn't happen yesterday. And again, to John's, I guess, to not to John's defense, but like, cool, we're only out this week without a superintendent. We don't have the person running this district or anyone for that matter. I mean, where's Stephanie? Where's Patty? Where's Ozzy? All of these people are out. Do I think it's a toxic environment that some of this is caused by you guys? I do. I do think that. This is started here with you guys and now it's ending with our kids not having the guidance that we need. I mean, this is crazy. And the fact that you guys think that, oh, well, it's only been five days without a superintendent. That's insane. We should have been notified last week. A general email, you hit a button. Hey, by the way, in the interim, we have this, or currently, unfortunately, we don't. If you have any questions, please reach out. Something simple like that would have been great. Instead, we're sitting here wondering what's going on. I mean, I found out through the rumor mill that now Mike's in charge. And I never heard anything about the principal, which is great. Thank you, by the way. Hopefully they're giving some kind of pay, but probably not because this district's so cheap with everything. So it's just insane though, like, please try to get on the same page. I know like, it's just insane though. And we're missing.
Mike, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir, please. I mean.
Who, who do you think should have told us that she was going to be out? Me, me, me too, because I found out the same way you did. So who should have done that?
You found out that the. I think it's, I think it's important to clarify. You found out that the superintendent of schools was going to be out through a rumor mill?
So it went right to Central Elementary School and that's why, who should have done that? The superintendent should have put somebody.
There was an email.
And that's my point.
There was an email that went out to every member of the school committee.
We all got it.
Yeah, that's how you were notified.
But when were you notified, I guess? We should have been.
I already knew.
And that's kind of crazy, right?
That's the notification that we received.
I mean, the rumors I heard was actually it happened on Thursday, not Wednesday. But the fact is, is that it's still two days last week that we didn't have someone in charge of this district. They were already out on leave. Lori was the only one left. So that's crazy. They were already out on leave. Lori was the only one left. So that's crazy. And then I'm not even going to bring up this new interim, you know, person you put in charge. They're Googling his name for Jason's new position. I can't with that. I'm not even. Barry? Your facilities director? Your interim facilities director, right now? Have you guys Googled him? He still has a mess of crap going up in Uxbridge and you guys are sitting here hiring more people. I, I just can't. Not you. I don't know if it's you guys, but the fact of the matter is, is-
Right. We didn't hire-
Google him. I mean, haven't met the guy personally.
We hired the superintendent.
But he still has a lot of mess going on.
We didn't hire anybody.
Okay, so the superintendent.
We didn't, we didn't hire him.
And he's not, it's, it's an interim. I don't, I don't know.
That job's posted for how long now? What's going on with it?
Alexis, so if you have any further, because it's public comment and I let everyone come up once. So if you thought of something else you'd like to say, please reach out to any school committee member. And because everyone only gets one shot at public comment, just to move the meeting along and make it fair for everybody. So please, please bring-
Point out that after the financial town meeting and Erica being called out for the meeting that occurred for the PowerPoint, you had the same evasive behaviors and I agree with Mike. But I will reach out to you during, through email.
Please do. Hello? Yes.
Hi, Makayla, oh, sorry, yep. Makayla Driscoll, Threeburn Hill Road. I just want to echo because I know Pendergast kind of alluded to this, but just so the school committee is aware of the rumor mill that was with the parents, it was last Wednesday. I received multiple text messages from other parents. And the rumor mill was, hey, what happened with Lori? She was escorted out of the building by the attorney.
I have to interrupt you. I have to interrupt you. I find no benefit in spreading rumors.
I'm not spreading rumors by any means, but I just want you to be aware-
I really find no benefit in talking about rumors that have no factual base. I find it destructive and it's, you're using the word rumor. I, I, I think it's very, um,
Well, I want you to understand that as parents, as parents, these are the messages that are being sent to the parents. So I think the school committee should be aware that that is what is being spoken to in the, in the community.
And it's, it's, it's a vicious rumor and rumors can be very destructive.
Thank you.
Matthew Allen, 159 Hope Wilderness Road. Back to touching on not telling why people are out. If there is a teacher going to be out for a long period of time, the principals of the school do let the parents know. I'll use an example. Last year, Mrs. Hanson went out, had a baby, obviously. That was a more obvious she was going out. But they do let them know if somebody is going to be out long-term, this is who may be replacing. If there's any problems, please feel free to contact, fill in the blank of the teacher or the subs that may be there. Or if they're not sure who the long-term sub is, please reach out to Rebecca Toomey, Hope Elementary. I think that's what the parents were more upset about. In a case of an emergency, not saying there would be an active shooter or a fire incident or something that does take place that is major, not just the principals reach out, but the principals have to go to their boss and it's a trickle down effect. Or if I have a problem at an IEP meeting, or if I have a problem with the principal and I'm not getting anywhere because of that, who do I go to if nobody's there? A message should have gone out, I think personally. If there's any problems, the superintendent is out. This is who's filling in if there's an emergency or if there needs to be something going on and discussed. I'm just saying, hopefully there is not a hurricane and we need somebody to tell us to put the tarps on. I feel like some of us should just know to put the tarps on, but somebody to trickle down like to us to let us know. I think that's what we were looking for. We get messages if there's a problem at the high school and I don't even have a high schooler. You know, just certain things just need to be, if there's in case of an emergency, having to do with something at the school or a problem that isn't getting handled.
So that brings us to new business and a presentation on fund balance from the town treasurer. Because we're obviously not going to have the superintendent's report or the finance report. And I will say, with the finance report, we have the, we have it in our packet. So if anyone has any questions, you can certainly ask Stephanie upon her return.
Thank you for this, thank you for this opportunity. I was asked to come to describe, clarify the general fund, fund balance. There was a lot of discussion at the financial town meeting of what was taken. The use of fund balance was suggested. It's terribly important that we understand what fund balance is. It's not cash. A gentleman stood up and suggested we had $5 million of cash in a bank account that we would use to fund operations, whether it be at the town level or the school level. Just to summarize, if you were to go to the audit report, you'd see that we have a $5.1 million fund balance. Fund balance is just a concept where we look at the total assets of the community. We subtract the, the liabilities of that community and we come up with fund balance. In the private sector, we call this retained earnings. And that amount is not in cash. That is the net assets that the community has accumulated over the years by paying off buildings, by, by paying off debt and unamortized assets. So when we use fund balance, we're creating a structural deficit because there is no source of revenue supporting the use of fund balance. Now, there's an argument that we've done that in the past and there was a meeting where someone suggested we used fund balance during the, the transition where we were synchronizing our budget to the state budget. Absolutely correct. And what was the purpose of the use of that fund balance? It was an extraordinary event, fully vetted by the state. We had to go to the Office of Municipal Affairs and, and, and the auditor general to make certain our theory was correct. And it was to accommodate the timing of the use of cash during that, that 15-month period. If you recall, you would have received four regular tax payments and there was a fifth payment that facilitated the cash flow necessary to make that synchronization. One-time event, extraordinary. And that was the use of that, I think it was about $500,000 that we did. And we did it successfully. We had a good audit and we transitioned now to the, this consistent with the state fiscal year. In the past, they've used fund balance when we have a budget and we're up against the 4% ceiling. And we say, and, and once again, there's a history here. I've been around a long time ago. And we say, you know, we, we, we're uncertain about the couple of aspects of the budget. We're going to get a lot of snow. Are we going to get a lot of police overtime? Are we going to, they're unknown. So budget is an estimate. It's not a definitive number that we are going to hit all the time. Sometimes we'll have a surplus, sometimes we'll have a deficit. Hopefully we always have a surplus and the fund balance will increase. The, in the, in the discussion we had at the last council meeting, we had bond counsel, we had the financial advisor. I reported his content, comments to me. Where the rating community and the financial community expects towns like ours to have a fund balance 15%. We've always hovered between nine and 10%. Why do we get away with it? Because we're consistently well managed and we don't use that fund balance down. Now, you might recall a couple of months ago, Little Compton got into a lot of problem. There was a large article in the Providence Journal, I believe it was Little Compton, where they consistently every year used fund balance to, to minimize the amount of tax. But what they were doing is they were using their savings account, if you would. Their ability to manage the cash and they backed themselves into a, into a hole. What we need to do in this community is try to maintain, maintain our fund balance and grow our fund balance as, as our operating expenses increase. I've always encouraged minimally to have a 10% fund balance. And we always hover between nine and, nine and 10%. I think strategically, we should make a point of, of trying to achieve the objectives that the financial community expects from us. The one big advantage that we have in this community is we have one very large taxpayer, the city of Providence. So the unknown of tax collections to facilitate our cash flow is less of a concern to the rating agency because of the city of Providence and the fact that it would be an extraordinary, well, what, what would stop the rate payers from paying their water bills? They need water. The water is going to be provided by the Providence Water Supply Board. Thus, we would derive our tax revenue. We'd be able to make our cash flow.
Mr. Spile, a question. You, you bring up the Providence Water Supply. So I know, and I'm not sure what year it was, I know there was an error in estimating the, the bill. We, right? So there was a $50,000, I think it was $50,000, 252.
An error was made.
200, so the error was made and they, we overbilled them. So to make up for that money, where did that money come from?
We're in the midst and we're going to see how we want. We manage our budget. We might manage-
Through the fund balance, was anything to-
No, if, if we have a deficit, that would fall to the fund balance and then we would have to make it up. But if we manage our budget during the fiscal year-
Make up for that 27, you're right. I'm sorry. It was like, it was like 250. It was a mistake.
Legitimate error that was made and it was caught after the bills went out. You know, the budget committee went through and let's face it, the buck stops here. I should have caught it.
It was a mistake. I, that was an error. It's not a question, I-
I have extraordinary confidence in my staff, particularly our, our finance director and our taxes.
My question has nothing to do with that.
But I have to get that plug in.
Yeah, no, I don't blame you. I don't blame you. You did mention too, so you said that you were, it was requested that you be here tonight. Who asked you to be here tonight?
Chuck Collins. You know, there has been such confusion, not only this year with the, the financial town meeting, but historically. The concept of fund balance eludes a lot of people that are on in the finance committee. Taught adjunct accounting for over 30 years. Let me finish the point. Undercounting is taught in one course in graduate school. It's, it's, it's a type of accounting that, that the average person doesn't understand the concepts. And we, we don't only go by generally accepted accounting, but principles, we have to go by government accounting standards as well. So there is some confusion. So let me answer your question, please. There was obvious confusion and there was one particular gentleman that stood up, said you've got $5 million. And that drove home the point that, you know, the, the average person says they've got funds, they've got a fund balance. So Mr. Collins suggested, you know, maybe you should, you know, make a presentation at the town council. And he said, by the way, why don't you get together with the school committee if they'll have you? And just make yourself available to answer questions as you're answering them.
No, I appreciate that. So, and, and the question is, so when you talk about, and again, these are, you know, over time that these are accrued, but this is not to be, not to be confused with, you know, the values of our property. It's, you know, there's no mortgage on the Cituate High School and it's valued at-
They have bonds.
But I'm, I'm asking, I'm like, but-
The equation is that simple. Total assets, if you look at your audit report, you've got a balance sheet. Total assets, less liabilities give you fund balance.
So you're saying that this five, and just, it's a clarifying question, this, this $5.1 million in fund balance takes into account the property values of the Brick and Mortar in Cituate?
If you look at a-
And I'm not an accountant, so I-
That's quite all right. If you look at page 19 on the last audit report, we've got $14.8 million of assets. Those assets include prepaid expenditures, et cetera, real estate, personal property tax receivables. You could go through the whole thing. Of that, we've got total liabilities of $5.2 million, leaving us with a a fund balance of $7 million. Many of those items are restricted, school fund balance, medical funds, funds that we have with WB, et cetera, leaving us with a net, an unassigned fund balance of $5 million. So that is, that is a combination of all of the various receivables and assets that the town has.
Thank you.
And those $5 million, you know, that's, that's a number, but it's not liquid. If you looked at it at the point of this measurement, when we did this audit report, am I speaking into the microphone? We had cash and cash equivalents of $1.1 million as of the end of that, that business day. At the end of that business day, we had liabilities, accounts payable and accrued expenses of $1.5 million. So we were $400,000 in waiting for taxes to come in the next point. Now, you recall in every, in every financial town meeting, I asked that we have a, the ability to have TANs, tax anticipation notes. That's in, in anticipation of cash flow problems. We, we don't have cash flow problems. We manage our cash very, very well. And we're successful at that and our vendors get paid very, very promptly. Would I like a larger, a stronger fund balance? Absolutely. Would the finance community like a stronger fund balance? Absolutely. They're looking at a 15% fund balance as a starting number. Bond counsel, me, our rating agencies all rely on fund balance. We shouldn't be relying on fund balance as we go into this next budget season. You guys do your budget. You come to the town council. The council entertains that budget and we, we discuss it and we try to prioritize the important aspects of municipal government as well as the school. And I don't get into policy. I just count numbers, right? Any questions though? I, I tried to keep this as simple as possible because I, I don't want to, you know, there was some suggestion that there was some effort to oversimplify this. I mean, it is, it is confusing and I don't want to suggest to anybody not take the time to look through the audit report. And I'm, and I'm always available. You know, place a call, email me. I'd be more than delighted to have a conversation with somebody who, who's interested in this. Any other questions?
Any questions from the people here?
Right, please, I do encourage you. This is, you know, from an accountant, this is good talk and it's exciting, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. The next item is concession stand. And I just want to give a little backdrop, a little, after the last school committee meeting. I know that I went to the field and I found out that Lori LaFauci and David had also gone on the Saturday afterwards, just to look around and to listen. And a meeting had already been planned for the next day between the superintendent and Stephanie. Dave Medbury came, John Anderson was there. Barry of the facilities person was there and myself, and we reviewed the plans of Cato Field. And it was concluded that we are comfortable putting the press box between the two bleachers on the grass section, not on the asphalt. And the, there were questions at that time of where the electrical conduit was going. And that was a concern. And while we were meeting, I called up a person named Rick Besser, who's a master electrician, who's also on the building committee, just to ask him some questions because it was a little bit of a comedy show. We're all out there looking at the conduits and electricity and no one really knew what they were talking about. So I, I called up Rick Besser, again, being on the building committee and a master electrician. And he came to the field and said what we really needed to do was find out where these electrical wires run in case it's an issue where we want to put the concession stand. So then he made a date to come back the following week. And at that following week, Rick Besser was there with a fellow that he works with. The Barry was there, Lori was there, Stephanie was there, and I showed up as well. And it was concluded at that meeting that we really don't have to worry about where these, well, we, I'm speaking for the electrician, said that we don't have to worry about where these wires run according to where the concession stand is going to go because he recommended that we do all the digging by hand. Don't do anything by machine because you just don't know where these wires are. It doesn't matter even if we do find out where the wires are. It all should be dug by hand. And in the meantime, it was, we, we needed, we need an engineer. And it was decided that, that we reach out to the town engineer to see if a town engineer would, is willing to do that work for us so that we don't have to go out to bid because that would just make things longer as well. So the town engineer agreed to do this work and that's where we stand now. It's my understanding that the tonight, if we approve to move forward with this project, that the town engineer will be brought on board. The Department of Public Works is willing to come and, and do the digging and the cement pouring according to whatever the engineer says we need to do. And we can move forward with this, with this project. And we can move forward with this, with this project. But we have to vote tonight to move forward with the, with the project. So that this work can start to get done. Anyone have any questions?
No, I just, I, I know at the last, the last meeting we had under, you know, and I'm not trying to prevent this from happening. This is, this is long overdue. What was the, so you're saying that the press box is going to be in a separate location than?
No, that's going to go on top.
Okay, that, so I was on top of where it is now?
On top. So the concession stand is going to move between the two bleacher seats, not on the asphalt, but on the grass.
Okay.
And then the press box goes on top.
Okay.
If it all gets approved by the engineer, which I don't see why it wouldn't happen.
Okay.
Concession stand has not been moved yet?
Correct. Because it needs to go on a.
On some sort of pylon.
Designed. And then, you know, and we have to, we, like I'm going to be joining, have to dig it all by hand as opposed to machine because we have to be cautious of where the wires are. But it doesn't matter where the wires are because they can just be moved. We just have to make sure we find them cautiously.
So question, if we approve this tonight, is there an expected timeframe? Because we're very fortunate. It's 80 degrees out, but it is October. Will it be done before the ground freezes?
That's a question for the engineer, but I, I am hopeful that it doesn't take much because I know that the boosters have done all the work and they have all the information from what I can tell that the engineer needs.
And I know Madam Booster President is in, out of the country. I'm sure she'd be here. And based on your conversations with Bianca and obviously the rest of the boosters, they're in agreement with this is the, they're satisfied with this move forward plan.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
I'm not good at this, so sorry. Matt Scanlon, I'm the treasurer of the boosters, 22 Eagle Drive. Yeah, I mean, I don't think we have to be happy with it, but I, I think this is the ideal spot for it. So yeah, definitely. We appreciate everybody coming down and seeing, seeing the spot. I think, you know, if we could get it in between, like it being back on the grass is a non-issue. I actually think that makes a lot of sense. So you're not digging through the asphalt or anything. So yeah, I think that's all right. And I also think, like you said, like, I don't want to be responsible for the second level going on. I'm not an engineer. So, so I don't, I don't know enough about it. Obviously we have all the drawings. The company can have, you know, can get you any detail you need because they had to tell us, like, I wouldn't have known enough to put the extra support in the sides, which they did to make sure the bottom level can support another one. But yeah, definitely think, you know, getting Joe involved and figuring out, I don't know. I have no idea on the timeline. I, I don't, I know what it takes to do an addition and that takes a long time with drawings and stuff, but I think location wise.
Is, is acceptable. And I know it's not first. Yeah, that, and I, that's, I think that's, yeah, that's, that's kind of the.
We think that's the best.
Um, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Try, yeah, try that. See how that works for you. But no, I get it. I. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Walter, we'll send Walter after you. The other piece to add to that too, is fiscal. So I know that the committee had voted at one point in time, legalize funds, a one-time funds to put towards that, the press box. And, but I'm concerned that if those funds are not expended, and I'm not looking just to throw money at it, right? But I, I, we need to be strategic about this. And I know Stephanie's not here, so I don't know that we'll get an answer. But it was my understanding that if those funds are not expended by the end of a certain time, then they would end up reverting back into a general fund. And I could be wrong on that. I just want to make sure the committee voted, and I can't remember what the number was, that we had those funds earmarked for that. So we need to, and I don't know the.
It was like 87,000.
Yeah, and it fluctuated a bit. Like Stephanie had it to the penny. I know that. So I, we just need to follow up on that because.
And I don't know how much the engineer or the digging or the cement's going to cost.
And I think we've said it before, boosters as always is willing to step up. Hopefully makes, hopefully we get some some this weekend and
Yeah.
Make some money. So like we've been willing to commit to, you know, helping out. I know DPW said that they're willing to do it, which social it would be. I don't know how that works. You know.
No, they've been wonderful partners to try and help. And we're, yeah, no, and we.
There's no.
You've been doing this for a while too, Matt. Like I think, but this. Yeah, no, but I.
Kids playing like Cato anymore either.
Yeah, that's, I, I get it. I get it. So, but there's a lot of people that were involved. A lot of people whose kids are long gone that have vested a great amount of time for that concession stand, selling bricks and doing this and slinging burgers and Oreos and you know what I mean? So I, it's, believe me, it's her. I just want to make sure that those funds are able to be, it's great that we say it. We just need to have the money to back it up. It's kind of what I just want to bring to light here.
You're saying there's a timeline to.
Over that discussion. I don't know whether at the end of 2025 or whether it's the school year.
I just want to make sure that, like, put our money where our mouth is because we as a committee committed that money to that. And it was a one time. It wasn't like we're pulling from something and, and that's been put aside for some time. So we just need to follow up on that as a committee.
Has the press box been purchased?
We, we're not purchasing it. You guys have the funds. I don't have the money. So you, yeah, so you, I don't, I don't have that.
You didn't bring the checkbook? Bianca said, Bianca Mancini said.
So we, we're not, we're not purchasing the press box. So that's, that's not coming out of our funds. So no, no, it definitely hasn't. And I would obviously suggest we get the engineer to sign off before you buy it. I mean, they have, there's a set of
Specs.
Specs and everything, including like everything like from up down like to the rental of the crane and which crane company I'm going to use. There's a port out there right now. I don't know. I can, if I, if you give me a few minutes, I'll look at my emails. I'll see if I can find it. I don't.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, like, are we coming?
Because it went to somebody else because it didn't go to me. I kind of got it through Jason or someone.
We getting it, are we close to that with that money that we had? I know we haven't taken into engineer class in this. That's all I kind of. Okay, just Bianca will sell a few more mattresses. We'll be good.
Do a match. We have, we, you know, I don't want to talk about mattresses right now, but.
What's that? Oh, you want to pull it up? Got that time? Yeah, what's it? Okay, I'm. Seven zero?
It was 69,900 as of September 2024. That was the quote for the press box.
And if you go down, I think that.
As a shipping container, yep, crane rental for eight hours. Welded top container to bottom container. We did have, we have a raised hand, Erica. Give me one second. And Kathleen, go ahead.
Hi Kathleen.
Not seeing any audio from your mic. So I think it's on your end.
Kathleen, we can't hear you.
Yeah, your mic isn't coming up and down. She just left and maybe she'll come back.
So do I have a motion to move forward with the concession stand project?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any more discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is a human resource request for proposal. I don't know if anyone has questions on it. I know John Anderson has taken a look at it. And is it your stamp of approval? If there's no questions, do I have a motion to approve the human resource request for proposal?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yep. The question I have, John, is, is the seventh, so we're looking at, we're going to release at the 10th deadline for questions. And then proposals due by October 31st. Do we think that's sufficient time? And where are we going to, where are we going to publish this? Or where are we, on the town website? Is it going to anywhere else? Where, like?
Sure, sure. With regard to.
Is that kind of standard practice for the RFPs like that?
Correct.
Okay.
In terms of standard practice that we distribute it as widely as we possibly can. One place that we can distribute it is by looking at the state master price agreement list for personnel services and human resource services. I shouldn't say personnel. That's different. And send it out to those vendors, as many vendors as can be identified.
I know where a little, our tables running a little short these past few days. Who is going to be in charge of? I mean, just because from a execution point, who's going to be in charge of getting this out and getting this to the right place?
My understanding that Stephanie is going to be in on Tuesday.
Okay. And that'll give us sufficient time to.
Yes.
Any more questions? All in favor? Aye. Next is approval of the annual school crisis plan. Do I have a motion to approve the crisis plan?
Make a motion to approve the annual school crisis plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have in our packet, the committee budget, the school committee budget calendar that Stephanie sent us. Are there any questions on that? Of course, you know, we can always approve it now and it could be flexible if need be. There's extra workshop meetings in there in case we need them. Otherwise, do I have a, like again, we can approve this, but we can, it's still flexible if something, so.
I'm not sure what the, the budget looks, the budget calendar looks like, but does that have any effect on the discussion you're going to have next month about the withdrawal of Northwest special?
It doesn't, but I can, it doesn't. It's just us come, it's just us planning when we're going to have our workshops to discuss next year's budget.
Perfect. Thank you.
So I have a motion to approve the FY26 school committee budget calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then workers' compensation? John was going to speak to that quickly.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to say, actually, I'm very proud of this. Believe it or not, the situat school department doesn't have workers' comp insurance. The situat school department is self-insured. And I will pick on Mr. Hassel as an example tonight. Mr. Hassel falls down five stairs. We have no insurance money at all. No insurance plan, nobody to go to for his very legitimate workers' comp claim that falls down the stairs while serving his. Back in two, I believe it was 2000, at a financial town meeting, the voters of situat voted to allow the school department and the town to enter into, to get workers' comp insurance. And that had to be done at a town meeting because the town of situat does not have a charter. So the body that makes those decisions is the town. My recollection is about 2007, the town council adopted the appropriate resolutions and motions to purchase insurance. It's 2025. When I came to situat in the spring of 2021, I fell off my chair. I, I'm not eligible for workers' comp, so I get any workers' comp for that. But the fact of the matter is, is that the school department has had insurance. For example, we had an employee who fell on the heights outside of Playbill School coming into work. And when an employee parks in our parking lot and is coming into work, we are responsible for the parking lot. And it was a workers' comp claim. We had no insurance. So the money had to be scraped up from other places in the budget. And other things that could have been done with the budget was whether it was more things for kids, more staff, putting it towards the fund balance. We couldn't do it. Again, we didn't have insurance. What you have in front of you is an RFP that Stephanie wrote. The RFP that Stephanie wrote is, is based on an RFP that the town council issued recently. It's the town council was out, was out shopping for workers' comp this spring, I believe. Stephanie took what the town council did, tailored it for what the school department needs. She added a rubber that is a standard for us to make the decision. And all we're asking for tonight is the authority to go forward. Issue this RFP. I will tell you, it's a practical matter. There are basically two companies here in Rhode Island. But we'd like to see what those bids are. And if, you know, we get a decent bid, I really encourage you, buy, buy some insurance.
This, the vote, this vote is just for.
To issue the RFP.
Right. And then we would get the quotes back.
You will get.
It's kind of, this one's kind of a no brainer, right?
Right. And I apologize if I have talked too long. It is a no brainer. I'm just proud of you.
Yeah, you should be.
I have a motion to accept the workers' comp RFP.
So moved.
Sure.
So if an employee got hurt at work last spring or last school year and we're still receiving bills for the injury, is that because there's no workers' comp? So if the person delivered the bill to Patty, I think her name is, what's our next step?
Oh.
We're still getting bills for this. So I didn't know we didn't have workers' comp. So it's concerning because now we're going to like default with the provider that the person went to for the injury.
But I.
Is that what we're talking about?
We're not, we're not going to default on anybody. What the workers' comp, if we get a policy, the policy will be going forward.
It's not much to ask. We're self insured, so any.
We're self insured. Our insurance will not cover those costs. The school department will.
But, but, exactly.
The school, the school department will have, this committee will have to come up with the money.
But what, what are you, what are you referring to, if I may ask?
So my husband was injured for the bus company last year and we're still getting the bill for it.
So you're. Yeah, your, your, your husband was employed as a bus driver or a bus monitor?
So we keep getting the bills. We dropped it off to Patty, maybe a month and a half ago. We just got another bill in the mail. I mean, now it's like the last notice. So how do we ensure that the school committee got that bill from Patty? Because if we're still getting bills, clearly you guys haven't seen the bill to try to figure out how to pay for that.
Just curious, is it the same bill? You know, sometimes they're always late on. It's the exact same bill.
Yeah.
Yep.
The employees are with, they didn't have workers' comp insurance to cover their injury when they got hurt at work.
At the mic. So people at home, sorry, John.
Believe that, that employees know that they, that they have workers' comp protection if they're injured at work. If I'm injured at my job and my employer says, go away, get over it. You know, put it on your health insurance, whatever. I'm going to go see a workers' comp. And workers' comp lawyers have been dealt with.
So for clarification, John, up until this point in time, we do not have workers' comp insurance. We cover our own. And there's nothing illegal about that. It's fiscally like what you're saying. So if there's, if there's an, if there is an issue with a particular bill, then. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, it, it would be. Yeah.
So if you drop it up to Patty.
Should we direct her finance?
The person. Probably Jennifer Carnevalley. Patty has sent the person sits near us.
Sure, yeah.
And I believe that she would give that to Jennifer Carnevalley.
Okay, I don't mind emailing. I just need to get the email so I can.
It would go to her. She had questions about it. She would go to office staff. I'm not aware of this particular situation, but Patty is.
They don't want you to give us any, like, you know what I mean?
Yes, I don't, yeah.
It may be that we are still waiting. I'll simply say as a vendor to the town, town is not, it's the fastest in terms of paying, so maybe. That they are waiting to, that we're waiting for the town to issue a tab. I tell you, personal experience, that it's not like that.
So I'll just send an email just to make sure it gets to the right person. So I'll email you tomorrow, maybe get the email address for her. So I don't have it.
Yes, she's on the website.
Oh, she's on the website, okay. I'll just send it that way. I can, I can ensure that we directly email that to her so she can. Figure it out.
Perfect, yes. So I have a a motion. For workers' comp. I need a second. And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I still haven't forgotten, forgotten about scheduling the meeting, but I was wondering if anyone had any announcements. And before we adjourn, now we can, um, so people can go home if they want to, or we can schedule.
So shout out to quick announcement. Obviously, you can't live in Cituit and not know what this weekend is, right? So um, big shout out to all of our. Local organizations and particularly all of our ones that are driven through. Our schools. I know we have the boosters. I know we have the uh the booster, um, the music boosters. We have the. The PTAs at the elementary level do baking and fundraising. Um, it's our biggest fundraiser for the for the boosters, I know, um, and all the volunteer organizations, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, everybody's out there, so. Just shout out to everybody.
Thank you.
So as far as scheduling, um.
Well, so I know we have STA negotiations from three to seven, so I, but I can meet after that.
What the date on that, Erica?
Oh, you're leaving the fourteenth? I can skip my board meeting on the fifteenth. It's a Wednesday.
So we've come back.
Know you'll be back.
So Wednesday, the fifteenth?
Yep.
So theoretically, that would be, um, it's not rocket scientists, but that would be like a week from, a week and a day. And that two of those days, we're not in school. Um, is it that? In the interim between now and then, we're moving forward with status quo that our principals are. Um, triaging whatever needs to be triaged at that level. I just want to make sure that we're in a good place to. Till that, till the date on the fifteenth.
So long as nothing goes wrong.
You're good with that?
I I I I know you're sitting there. You, I I I get it, but and again.
At least we're lucky to not have. Um, students in the building on Friday and Monday, if that makes a difference. No, we're talking day and we're making sure it's not too far out.
AM or PM? I'll do whatever. I'm telling you, this is, I'll make myself.
I'm in Connecticut that day, but I can. Can anybody meet early? Do we want to meet early? I don't know what people's work schedules are. What time you go in? We want to try to meet like at eight?
In the morning?
Dave?
Yeah, I can, I can meet at eight. I just have to leave by nine.
Meteor Center? That's here.
Eight AM on a Wednesday, my, with school's in session, so. Yeah, um, so where.
Can we go to the senior center?
Let's go to town hall.
Yeah, council chambers.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. I I mean, barring any council meetings at eight AM on a Wednesday morning, because you you do all, you do all of the. Right, but uh not anything that you're aware of that.
Um, I I want to be very clear that I have a hold on somebody else at that time. I will see if I can get out of it. If I can't get out of it, I will, somebody else in my office will cover it.
Okay.
Perhaps Sean, since you know Sean.
Yeah.
Or it could be Ben Sngia. That's on somebody, somebody will be there.
Thank you.
You know. If we're talking about morning, I can meet early on Friday.
This Friday?
I could meet at seven o'clock in the morning.
I can meet early. Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
And it has to be seven AM tomorrow.
Yep, that's right.
It'll be seven AM tomorrow. We have to.
We have to post by seven AM.
Yeah, right. Let's do it.
So eight AM.
Eight AM.
So eight AM on the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Town Hall? I'll make sure the facility is open.
I want to be clear, and I recommend that you post it both for executive session and in regular session. So that if you end up deciding you want to talk about somebody's job performance.
Post both, at opening at eight o'clock or whatever it is, executive session pursuant to, and then uh whatever.
Then public. I want to make sure that you are.
That makes sense.
I do not want you to walk in and say, John, why didn't?
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.